I'd like to call the order, the City of Littleton City Council Special Meeting for Tuesday, October 12, 2021. Time is 6:30 PM or 18:30. City Clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Valdez.
Present.
Mayor Protem Malin.
Happy to say I'm here.
And we're happy that you're here. Councilmember Grove.
Here.
Councilmember Fay.
Here.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Rednicki.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance. All right, Council, I'm going to move down to approval of the agenda. I'm going to pull the item out that is under Consent Agenda, the minutes. And he'll come back to us in a couple of weeks, I believe. So, any problems with that? Seeing none, approved as changed. Move down to comments. City Manager.
No report, Council.
Thank you. City Attorney.
No report. Thank you, Mayor.
We can get through this. All right, Councilmember Rednicki.
No comment.
Councilmember Driscoll.
No report.
Councilmember Fay.
No comment.
Grove?
Grove.
A couple of things. First of all, Next Gen, they are going to be working on a Get Out the Vote campaign, and they've kind of outlined it and received approval on it from the City Clerk's office. And during the month of October, their members are going to encourage their friends to vote. And I have to specify, according to the Fair Campaign Act, they are not going to advocate for any initiative or any type of candidate. They just want to encourage young people to vote. The Clerk's office also gave them some information from the county on voting so that they can pass that out. And they were going to contact the Communication Department Office at the city to see about what other events they might go to and pass out these flyers and encourage others to vote. This morning, we had a meeting with the city and myself and Kelly Milliman with Salsaburban. Couple updates. One on Jackass Hill, I reported on our open house that we had. They are going to tabulate the comments from that open house and then put together a little update on what they're doing to the people that gave them contact information so they'll keep in contact on the process of their plan that they're going to be working on. If the budget is approved, which hopefully it will be for Salsaburban in the next week or two, then they'll go ahead and plan on hiring a landscape architect, a consultant, to look at various options to mitigate some of the issues that they've been facing on Jackass Hill. In the short run, they're asking rangers to stop by and we'll have a little more of a police presence. And that's it on that one. Bridgeview Pond, good news on that front. Salsaburban is doing some bank restoration on the little pond there, some safety improvements, and doing some reseeding along the bank. It'll take some time. Right now, we're looking at water rights. As you know, that's a lengthy process, and the beginning of that process is going through and getting the documents that are hard copy needed to begin that process. Reynolds Landing, just a quick review on that. That project started in 2016, and it probably will take to 2024 to get implementation, actually, site construction. And it's a $13.6 million project. So, Salsaburban will be responsible for the maintenance, and there's many partners involved in this project. And another thing that Littleton is working, that Salsaburban is working on, is replacing the Littleton Bubble, whether it will be some kind of synthetic material like they have now, something like maybe the airport or an actual building, they're still evaluating. And, as you know, Hudson Gardens is owned by Salsaburban, and they have a great Halloween event over there. So if you're interested, those people that are watching or in the audience might want to take advantage of that. Last, with respect to Salsaburban, it is our hope that next year, that is part of our projects, we will update our Open Space Master Plan, and as well as Salsaburban will do that. And we'll do it in conjunction so that we're in lockstep with them, so that we make sure we coordinate very well. So if everything goes according to plan, we will be working on that. And it is our hope that we can have maybe more meetings with Salsaburban instead of one a year, maybe two a year. First one maybe to be scheduled with our council after their elections in May. So there, if they have any changes, it will be their latest board along with our council to kind of talk about things. And if we are going to do an open space plan update, that would be a good topic, as well as other specific parks that we are working on. And that's it.
Great. And please let the record show that Councilmember Milliman has arrived. Did you have any reports for us?
Hi, good evening, everybody. Thank you, Mayor. I do, I want to express my sincere gratitude and thankfulness that Officer Snook is now on his way home, or maybe is home, and hopefully resting and continuing to heal. That's really, really good news. Myself and Patrick Driscoll attended the North Littleton Promise Fiesta last Thursday. And North Littleton Promise, if you don't know anything about this organization, they've been around since 2003. And they have been working with immigrant families in Littleton who are here and don't have a lot of resources, helping those families connect with 45 different partnering organizations within the city. It's a very successful program. It was very well attended, a lot of fun, and I'm just super proud of that nonprofit organization and what they're doing to help our immigrant families here in Littleton. And I think that's it.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem.
No report, thanks, Mayor.
And I have no report either. We have no citizen appearances tonight. We'll move into our public comments. The time now, open up the public comments. It is 6:37. Councilmember Rednicki.
Yes, public comment is an opportunity to express opinions or ask questions regarding issues that are not part of public hearings on tonight's agenda. Each speaker will have, will be limited to three minutes. The City Council is not authorized under the Colorado Open Meetings Law to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on any issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. The mayor may refer the matter to the City Manager and City Attorney for immediate comment after public comment to obtain additional information and report back to the council as appropriate. We expect comments to be civil. Disrespectful or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Please remember to state your name and address or council district for the record. And finally, please speak directly into the microphone.
Thank you. Also, just as a reminder, if you're going to speak under the item that is under item number nine, and the one speaker we have signed up has indicated they want to talk about short-term rentals, that will be later on the agenda, if you will, please. So you can still speak, just please don't speak about the short-term rentals. And also, for the rest of the crowd, if anybody else does want to speak, we are not taking any comments, public comments or otherwise regarding the Newton Property Plan Development, also was known to some as Aspen Grove. And with that, so we have Kerry Veeth.
I'll have to talk later.
And he will talk later. With that, the other one, Vanessa has crossed out her name, so I think she's not speaking. All right. With that, I will close the public comments at 6:39.
Sorry, can I speak? I was confused on the.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Come on up.
All right.
It is still open.
Too many things to sign up for.
Yeah, I know, list everywhere. Thank you.
All right. My name's Vanessa Menke, owner of Jake's Brew Bar in downtown Littleton. I am here, as long as I can be, here to support the noise ordinance change.
Okay, that's something we're going to be speaking on later.
Okay, then I'll wait, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you very much. So I'm leaving you crossed out.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right. So we are closed at 6:39. We have no Consent Agenda item tonight. That item was pulled. We move down to our general business. So we have item number, or resolution 49-2021, let's see, confirming City Council's support of a yes vote on ballot issue 3A, seeking voter approval of a three-quarter cent sales and use tax increase to fund the cost of capital improvement projects in the city. And Council, for legal reasons, staff is not going to be making any comments tonight on this. So please, don't ask or direct any questions to staff. Do state your reasons for supporting or otherwise on ballot question 3A. Council, open it up for discussion. Who wants to start out? Councilmember Driscoll.
I wasn't going to start out, but I'm going to just make a motion to approve Resolution 49-2021.
Second.
We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Milliman. Council, do we, we ought to do some discussion as to what, you know, we're leaning on here. Councilmember Fay.
I'm reluctant to advise the voters. I am very much a firm believer in the voters will decide. I was very, very much in favor of putting the matter on the ballot, but I'm reluctant to advise voters beyond what they already know.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember Rednicki.
Well, I am in favor also of raising the Littleton sales tax rate from 3% to 3.75%. No one likes to pay taxes, myself included. Conversely, no one likes decrepit streets, crumbling sidewalks, aging public buildings, rusted-out police cars, or no money for amenities that make living in Littleton pleasurable and safe. As the newcomer to council, it was my first opportunity to see our two-inch-thick budget analysis for 2022. And I've seen the numbers, and the capital funds, capital projects fund is in dire straits. We could do nothing. I call it cutting off the nose to spite the face. We could do nothing, and we will have some trouble, big trouble, down the road. So adding 75 cents on $100 purchase will bring the city up to the average of the metropolitan area and help chip away at the backlog of capital projects needing attention.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Milliman.
Just a quick comment. I'm in full support of this ballot initiative and this resolution, and I've been telling everybody to please support this. As I know, as our city has grown and it continues to grow over the next 10, 20, 40 years, we need to be able to keep up with basic maintenance and doing some really cool things for our city. And it's been a long time since we've raised taxes, so it's, you know, it's really time. So I'm in full support.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Grove.
I am also an advocate of this ballot issue because we have an aging infrastructure. I get many emails and calls from citizens who want something fixed, and sometimes the response is something is 40 years old and we just don't have the money. We have buildings falling down, we have a fleet that needs to be replaced, we want to keep up the quality of life and keep Littleton what we are used to, the nice place to live. And I think the sales tax, it's been a long time in coming, will help us.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Driscoll, did you have anything you want to?
No, I think most people know I've been a huge proponent of this, this ask. It doesn't come lightly, I'm not, frankly, don't care for tax at all, but, you know, there's a time and need for, for an ask from the city, and I hope citizens take notice of it and join in with us. And, you know, we can get after a lot of work quickly if we can get this passed, so I look forward to November 2nd.
Great, thank you. Mayor Protem.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor. I've spoken in favor of this on a number of occasions. I expect that most people in attendance who are listening tonight know, know my reasons. Very simply, this is a make or break vote for the city. It has to be a yes, it has to be a yes, it has to be a yes, and that's why I'm in favor of the increase and the resolution tonight.
Thank you. All right, then I'll go ahead and, I saw a sign just today that said the city has a huge surplus out. So vote no is what the sign was encouraging, and it's really just the opposite. Evidently, the person who had the sign in their yard hasn't, doesn't understand the issue. I'm going to, I'm going to go down through, through a few things that I have put together here. If approved, the proposed sales increase will not be a golden egg to our city financial needs. Mayor Protem, City Manager and I talked about this the other day, and there's so many things that we would like to do, but this increase is not a golden egg that's going to save the city from everything. It is specific what will be, if passed by the voters, what the funds will be used for. Without the new revenue to address ongoing issues, Littleton's capital project funds projected to be, is projected to be deleted by 2025. That's three years. That's three years that our capital fund will be depleted. Littleton's unfunded capital and infrastructure projects total about $98 million over the next 15 years. That's about $6.5 million per year. The city's capital project funds bring in about $6 million annually. Of the $6 million, about $3.5 million of that margin for maintenance. As I said, the city has a backlog of infrastructure and maintenance projects totaling over $98 million. The sales tax increase will fund capital infrastructure projects that include repair and maintenance in neighborhood streets, provide matching funds for grants to improve the intersection at Mineral and Santa Fe and other locations, who will also be used to maintain and improve city buildings. And also, it will help provide for our police department in support of the unfunded state mandate, body cameras for all officers. The sales tax increase is not for new programs or programs that fall under, or fall outside appropriate use of sales tax funding. There are some citizens that want us to transfer money from the water treatment plant. Now, I think that's where the sign was about, because the reason is, is because it's true that the water treatment plant does have a healthy balance in their general fund. However, the city cannot legally transfer funds from the water treatment plant to the city's general account or any other account. And I believe that's what that citizen thinks, that that money is available for our city account, and it just isn't so. For that reason, I am going to fully support the sales tax increase, and I encourage other folks to do so. All right. We have a motion and a second. Council, if you're ready to vote. If I'm ready to get this thing going. Let me know when it's out there, Scott. There you go. Thank you. All right, we all vote. Great.
The vote is seven in favor. The motion carries unanimously.
Great, thank you very much. We have 9A, Ordinance 17-2021, an ordinance on second reading, amending the noise control ordinance, Title VII, Chapter III, Section 3 and 6 of the Littleton City Code pertaining to standards and maximum permissible continuous sounds pressure levels in the Main Street Historic District. Not as easy to read as you would think. All right, so Council, we have that ordinance before us, and after staff presentation, and we will have our discussion on this issue, and then I will be looking for a motion. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to City Manager.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have a public hearing this evening on this ordinance, and so I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Henninger. She's our Community Development Director. So Jennifer.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Jennifer Henninger, Community Development Director. And with me, I have Ernie Rose, our Development Review Planner, who is responsible for doing much of the reconnaissance, shall we say, of noise levels during the summer. All right, we are up to go here. So just a quick recap of what we've done since now, since we started all of this back in March. We're going to go ahead and review the current temporary noise control ordinance that is in place until, I believe, the first of November. We'll look at the findings of our noise monitoring that was done by Rebecca, and then our code enforcement manager, Rebecca Thompson. We'll evaluate the proposed changes. And just to recap on the dates that we have done so far, on August 10, at a City Council study session, we did decide to move forward with a permanent ordinance. We had our first reading on the 7th of September, and tonight is the second reading and public hearing. So the temporary ordinance that currently is in place defines the area where the increased noise levels would be permitted, as the Main Street Historic District as it stands now, as the area where the noise ordinance would be different. It adds flexibility to the sound pressure levels. If you'll recall, we have very distinct residential levels, business levels, industrial levels, and there really isn't a level for anything that's mixed use, which is what our downtown area has become, is a mixed-use area. We had a new table for the sound pressure level, and we gave it specific days and times. We've defined those days and times for the increased noise level. On the temporary ordinance, we had Thursdays, so we had Thursdays, Fridays, and Saturdays with increased noise until 10:00 PM, from 12 noon until 10:00 PM. This does allow for the flexibility of the district businesses to provide the outdoor seating areas, have live music should they choose, and create that atmosphere of engagement along Main Street. What we are recommending in moving forward with the ordinance that is before you this evening is to remove the Thursdays from the higher decibel levels, and this is based on a few complaints that we received. So in terms of our downtown monitoring, we did this between April and July. So if you remember, the temporary ordinance was put into place in March, so we started that monitoring in April. We did take ambient noise readings along Main Street, and those leveled out at 83.4. So that was the ambient, or the background noise from traffic along Main Street. We took readings at 11 predetermined locations along Main Street. We had a total of 129 readings, and only 11 of those readings exceeded the 80-decibel limit. We did these on different days of the week, Thursday, Friday, Saturday. Do we do any on Sunday? No, just the Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and we did them at different times of the day as well. The highest reading that we did have is 90.1, and that was 30 feet from a van that was in the middle of Main Street. And so this would be comparable to a long noise. No complaints were, however, received during the time of the higher decibel readings. So as I stated before, the recommended changes to the ordinance and what's before you this evening is to eliminate Thursdays from that higher decibel level. So these are the tables. The one at the top is a table that is currently in our ordinance, not the temporary ones, but actually in our ordinance. And then the one below, proposed, was what we had, I think this is what, was the temporary one. So we had the Friday, actually, I apologize, this is the one that we are proposing this evening that just has the Friday and Saturday. And as you can see, the decibel levels then drop from the 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM. So staff does recommend an approval of this ordinance. I do need to mention that we have received a number of comments in the last two weeks from our, since the time of the public, of the first reading. So we have received comments in favor, we have received some comments opposed, we have also received some comments with some suggested modifications, and I just want to address a few of those. We did receive comments from the Littleton Business Chamber asking that an additional day be added, that the Thursday be added, and that the time be increased until 11:00 PM instead of the 10:00 PM. And also, that Sundays be allowed for the increased decibel reading, the 80-decibel readings on Sundays from 12:00 PM until 6:00 PM. So that was one request that we received. Those that have put in, in their opposition to the ordinance, a lot of the comments that we received were from a 501(c)(3) nonprofit agency located outside of the Main Street Historic District in question. And they're asking that the limit be placed at 65. And something that I would like to remind Council that this ordinance did not come about just because of weekends on Main. It was an issue that we were having prior to weekends on Main, prior to COVID, where we have our downtown area, which has thankfully become a very vibrant place to be. But we were getting conflicting reports of noise levels and how we, as code enforcement, enforce that when we have pretty low decibel levels, 55 for our residential, and I believe 65 for, for business.
Yes.
Yes. So we were running into issues prior to weekends on Main, prior to COVID on this, and it was something that we did want to address, but with the rise of weekends on Main, we brought it before you as the temporary ordinance, and then did the research on that. So just a clarification on that. Some other things that have been suggested in the comments is reducing the hours, possibly from four until 10, and limit it to just Main Street and not the Main Street Historic District, because if you look, I did not have a map in here, but it is in your attachments on your legislature item, it's not just Main Street, it's a little bit off Main Street in our Main Street Historic District. So just wanted to bring those up, but staff recommendation still stands the way presented to Council. So Ernie and I are here, if you have any questions about this ordinance.
Great. Council, are there any questions before we go into our public hearing?
Just a point of clarification, that letter came from Historic Downtown Littleton Merchants and, and Littleton Business Chamber, so it came from both of them.
Correct, thank you for that clarification.
And so they are looking to add Thursday from noon until 11:00, Friday and Saturday, so adding an additional hour on Friday and Saturday, and then, as Jennifer mentioned, Sunday. So I just want to make sure people are clear what exactly they were looking for.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Grove.
I just want to clarify, currently, the temporary ordinance is Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, 4 to 10?
Noon to 10.
Noon to 10, correct. So we, we have to consider days and hours. So we have to consider days and hours and possibly extensions based on the recommendation from some of the citizens and business owners, right?
Yes, what is before you for consideration would reduce a day?
So we, so we don't want to, we may or may not, I don't know what we're going to do at this point, but it's accepting as is your recommending dropping Thursday and you're also recommending leaving the four to ten on Friday and Saturday?
No.
No.
No, that was a recommendation of Hoodlum and the downtown merchants as well as Littleton Chamber.
It's what you have in the ordinance, right? That is what you're proposing?
Yeah.
Which is no.
There's two main changes to this particular ordinance. One is it makes these hours, these increased hours, permanent. So it's been temporary up until this point, expires at the end of the month, it'll be permanent. The second change is we've dropped Thursdays. So temporarily, we had allowed Thursdays from noon to ten PM to be part of this equation. It's not in this one, that's what staff is recommending, but we obviously have some differing views from the business community who'd like to increase hours and put back the Thursday. So that's what council will have to consider tonight.
And that's, so the gray is what you're recommending changing then, it's not what is currently?
The gray has Thursday through Saturday.
So just a clarification, there are two ordinances in your, I had the same computer and I totally understand.
Okay.
So there are two ordinances in your packet. The ordinance seventeen is the one for your consideration this evening. Ordinance, I believe it is three, yes, ordinance three is the temporary ordinance.
But the one we're voting on is seventeen.
Seventeen.
That's this one. And that's where you have in there the Sunday, Monday, Thursday, Sunday in one category and then Friday, Saturday in another.
Correct, so.
Okay.
The cleaner way to have done that would have probably been Sunday through Thursday, but we put Thursday back in.
Okay.
But Sunday through Thursday, it would be the sixty and fifty-five. And then Friday and Saturday is when we're asking to make the permanent change of eighty decibels between twelve and ten PM.
So we just have to make sure we're talking about the right one.
We're only talking about one and that's seventeen?
Seventeen.
Yeah.
We just, we included three to remind you what the temporary ordinance was.
That's where the confusion is.
Yeah.
Okay. Councilmember Milliman?
Jennifer, so if a business wants to have a band on a Thursday night, how many times can they apply for a noise ordinance pass throughout the year?
Ernie, do you want to address how amplified sound permits?
They'd be applying for an amplified sound permit and there's no limit on those. The only time we ever had an issue, if we got a lot of complaints, we would start monitoring it more. But you can apply for an amplified sound permit for basically any day of the week and it allows you to have amplified sound, so.
Is there a cost to the business for applying for that?
Fifty dollars.
Fifty dollars, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rednicki?
What was the previous decibel level allowed in downtown before this all came up and the temporary rules went into place?
It's fifty and fifty-five. Well, in commercial, it could get up to sixty-five, but actually, I'd have to look at the table to be sure.
Yep, there we go.
So there's the original one. Downtown, it would be under the business, which was fifty-five.
At night?
At night. Seven AM, seven PM to seven AM, fifty-five. Sixty during the day, which is over on the left hand.
Okay, that's, but that's currently, what was it five years ago? That? Okay, all right, thank you. Second, I assume here, business can have all the music they want inside at whatever noise level they want as long as it's maintained within the building, is that correct?
Yes, and actually, the last few times we've tested, the Main Street wasn't going on and a lot of the bands were out in front, but they turned the music toward inside and it was a lot quieter that way.
Okay.
So, but they had bands going then, yeah.
All right, so inside, there's no permit required, just fire away?
Right.
Let's see, downtown is getting fairly well built out with a lot of vibrancy and north of Main Street is becoming more developed. Obviously, the future development is going to be happening to the south of Main Street. So question is, any consideration of adding Alamo to the noise ordinance or is that to be taken care of in the future?
To be taken care of in the future, addressed in the future. So the ordinance stands as now. We also did get a question about with the potential adoption of a new historic district, what would that do? So the, our position, and you can back me up on this, our position is this is really for the Main Street Historic District as defined at this point in time.
At this point in time, right.
Yep. Do you want to clarify that, Reed?
Nope, the Main Street Historic District, it's set forth in our codes defined as the twenty-two hundred through twenty-seven hundred block of Main Street. So when council considers the new downtown historic district, which would include those portions of Alamo in a few weeks, that would have a separate definition. So this is only applying to the Main Street Historic District.
Last question, there were four complaints filed when you started doing the monitoring. Were they, were the complaints with four different people or two people making two complaints or?
I think they were all in one.
I'm sorry?
One business was had, it was my understanding, one business had, was the source of the complaints.
No, not the source, but the people making the complaints.
Oh, it was the same person, is that what you're saying?
Yes, I'm asking.
Yes, it was the same person, I apologize.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing piece of this meeting. It is seven oh four. Do we have a sign off list? I know there's at least one person that wants to speak, did you want to say something?
May I speak after the citizens speak?
We all will get a chance to speak, yeah. Okay.
This is your first conference?
I just wanted to make sure we're tracking because we aren't all this.
Yeah, we're right, I believe we are. Okay, so from the list, we, I better go back and remind everybody of our rules here. So everybody will have three minutes to speak. Please give us your name, address or council district number and speak directly into the microphone. We will start with Pam Chadbourne. Then after that, we have Phil Schlesinger and Vanessa Milna.
Good evening, council. My name is Pam Chadbourne. I live three blocks from Main Street and I'm opposed to this ordinance. I'd like you to amend it and limit the change, the maximum to sixty-five dB because this is a radical change. This is a logarithmic scale like earthquakes. It is not a linear scale. This is not a little change. This is like five times as loud and that is huge. So make an incremental, sixty-five is already much louder than any other residential or business, commercial district. Make an incremental change and see what happens. That's appropriate for Littleton. Reduce the hours to four PM to ten PM and keep it to Fridays and Saturday. Do not make more time or more days. Limit the area to Main Street. I'm concerned that there is a confusion about historic district and there would be pressure to expand it. You already heard that, so that question. There was no technical consultant here. This city loves to get technical consultants every at the drop of a hat. But for this, which is highly technical, there's wind drift and the attenuation of sound as it travels or not. Hudson Gardens had a huge problem and it could be heard for miles and that had to be restricted. Where is the technical consultant here? You should have one or staff should have one. I appreciate Ernie and Rebecca. I love their work. They have been great, but this is not their job. This is a technical thing that needs technical answers. And to monitor what, how this is implemented, we need a setup, some kind of formal kind of monitoring. I think there should be fixed detectors around the perimeter where the residential district begins and in all directions, obviously because of wind. And then you have some concept, staff can figure out what's going on, where the complaints might be. And you need a budget for staff reporting, that isn't in there. And there's no penalties. There should be penalties, especially for repeated violations. Otherwise, I mean, I have over and over heard you express these concerns about other things. None of this is in here, it needs to be there. Littleton is, downtown historic Littleton is vibrant because of the historic district arguably, not because of loud restaurants and bars. And good restaurants and bars don't need loudness to succeed. We have a character, it is good and it is working and it is vibrant. And so make an incremental change and leave to future councils this decision. Finally, it wasn't the business chamber in Hoodlum who submitted that letter, it was their boards. And this is maybe nine guys who get together and want certain things. It is not all the businesses, not all the businesses are in favor, a lot of them are not. Thanks.
Thank you, Pam. All right, Phil, then Vanessa and then Sandy Topoff.
I don't care to speak.
Okay, then we'll move right into Vanessa. She's back.
Try this again.
All right, and then, what, Sandy, then you'll be up next.
All right. Name's Vanessa Menke, owner of Jake's Brew Bar downtown Littleton, here to support the noise ordinance change. The definition of downtown is a central area of town. It's lively, it's fun, it's exciting, it's why I bought my house here, why I've opened businesses here, for that chance to be exciting, for people to come, you know, enjoy everybody else. It's why we also pay more in rent and overhead is for that chance of liviness and again, more of a central location for music and events. With liviness does come noise, obviously, it just happens, I mean, minus the, some of the other random noise that we get around town, I'm sure that my neighbors' lawn mowers are way over the amount that we can play music in downtown Littleton. I'm sure it's no secret that Littleton was dubbed for many, many, many years, Little Fun. And it's for these very reasons that we were dubbed that. And it's good to see a council that's finally allowing that change. And that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Sandy.
I'm Sandy Topoff. I live on Alamo, a block away from Jake's Brew Bar.
Good, thank you.
So first of all, I love living in downtown Littleton, probably more than anybody, I fricking love it. I spent my whole life trying to get into downtown Littleton and I'm here and for the last six years, I have enjoyed listening to all the bands. I can hear Jake's Brew Bar bands, I can hear all the Live Street, all the Main Street bands and it's been so much fun. But since the noise increase, it has sucked so bad to live right there. And for some reason, the way the sound echoes, you don't realize it and I guess none of you live like right where I do, but the noise from downtown, it echoes and it reverberates. And before, with our, whatever the noise level was, we could hear the words and hear the music super clearly and it was fun. And now, some of the bands that played at Jake's this year sucked and they were like rock and roll cover bands and it was normally fun, but because they're small bands, they don't have the music equipment to not have their sound distorted. When they play, I don't hear the music, I hear. That's what I hear from my doorstep. My son's bedroom is on the corner of Alamo Avenue and my son is disabled. And to try to sleep at night for any of us when that's going on, I don't go to bed early, I usually sit on the front porch and listen to the bands, but that's what I hear and it's not how it used to be. And I'm all for bands and parties and all the stuff going on downtown, but there's so many more residents in downtown now. So I don't understand the need to make it that much louder. We could hear the bands. I guess that's my point. And also, they said that there weren't, the complaints all came from the same person and that's not true because I also complained. I wrote in a letter of complaint and I was polite and I tried to explain and I, most of the time, this sounds pretty good, but since I think you had offered to come out to my house and listen, but we just haven't had anything crazy lately happen. So if you could just maybe increase it just a little bit, but not allow the total insanity and Jake's, I support you. I mean, I go, I support all the businesses, all my friends come in town, we go to the businesses and it's not that I'm not supportive of live bands, I played in a fricking band in the eighties, but I don't need that distorted. And I'm sorry to yell into the microphone, but I wanted you guys to understand what we now hear. And then the nursing home behind me, the Lilly Borts Assisted Living, I mean, those people over there, I know some people that work there and they don't get a choice in what they hear and they're not well. And I don't think it's fair to make innocent people have to listen to shitty bands at full volume, completely distorted. So please, please don't torture us like this, let's keep the bands, but let's not make it crazy. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandy. That is it for the list, anybody else that would like to speak?
Can I just comment?
You've already had your opportunity, sorry. Okay, seeing no other speakers, it is seven thirteen, I will close the public hearing. Counsel, open it up to counsel discussion as we always have, council member Fay. Who would like to speak or make a motion?
I would like to.
I'm sorry, go ahead, council member Fay. Council member Fay, then we'll go to Milliman.
I'd like to ask a question.
Turn the microphone.
If we vote against this, what is the, what is enforced in effect then?
That'd be the lower decibel levels. So you could not go over sixty-five, which we took readings that were over sixty-five. It was the increase of weekends on Main that caused the extra sound. And so that's why the sound got out into the streets and probably bounced off the buildings a little bit more. But if we don't go to eighty, we have to go to a lower level, which is a certain violation if there's a band out in the street.
So then, are we back at ordinance three? No. Ordinance three is the temporary one. So that one will be gone no matter what, is that right?
Correct.
Correct, and that will expire on the first of November. And then, what are the decibel levels in the day? The chart was too small for me to see.
For business, it's sixty during the day. So from seven AM to seven PM, that's what it would go back to, if that's what you're asking.
Sixty during the day, fifty-five at night?
Correct.
For downtown, every day?
That's what it would revert to, correct.
Every day.
Every day.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, council member Milliman.
I definitely want to propose an amendment to this. Do I do it after we do the motion?
Let's wait till we get a main motion and then we'll enter.
Then I'd like to move to approve ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, amending the noise control ordinance, title seven, chapter three, section three and six of the Littleton City Code pertaining to standards and maximum permissible, permissible continuous sound pressure levels in the Main Street Historic District.
Second.
We have a motion and second, with council member, Mayor Protem. All right, council, continue discussion. You made the motion, do you have something?
Yeah, I, um...
Or would you rather hear a little bit of discussion first?
I want to hear a little discussion first.
There you go, okay, all right. Councilmember Grove?
Question for...
Have your microphone, please.
Question for staff, did you do any readings when the bands were faced inward and there was less of, less noise? Did you measure the decibel levels?
Yes.
And what were those at?
It's been a couple of weeks, definitely below eighty, probably sixty, seventy to seventy-five. We took readings just recently because the weekends on Main just ended. So the last one we did, I don't know if the numbers are in there, but I don't recall anything over seventy-five decibels.
Okay.
Standing that close. And that's pretty close to the band.
And then, what is the procedure? Let's say there's a complaint and you go out there and measure it and this passes and it's ninety, what are the penalties? Do the, somebody, you just talk to the owner or do they have?
They're always given a chance to correct it. You can have them turn it down immediately, which is what we usually recommend. There's so many factors that are in play, weather, different times of day, the sound travels differently. But in most cases, if not all, they're just, they turn it down and it's within the limits and the violation goes away.
What if it's like repeated or anything, is there any, like code enforcement, what I'm getting at is the penalties, is there any penalties for?
Well, eventually, there would be, but we haven't ever got to that point.
City attorney, maybe we can hear from you.
Sure. To, to speak towards that, yes, you could be issued a summons into our municipal court for noise... That is, within our noise ordinances, it's, that particular section was not brought forward to you tonight because it was not one of the sections we were amending, but it is possibly punishable.
Driscoll.
Yes, Jerry, thanks. You know, I, I think Hoodlum and Littleton Business Chamber has made a compelling argument. I mean, the complaints have come from two people, maybe. I appreciate the people speaking up tonight. You know, the city has taken a real beating during COVID, but even prior to COVID, I mean, the city hasn't always been this vibrant. And I think you have to give a lot of credit to the bars and restaurants for what they've done. And part of that is bringing in bands. People, especially my kids who are all under 25, enjoy coming down, listening to the bands. So it is one of the key reasons people are coming into downtown Littleton. And I think the noise ordinance that they're proposing, going that extra day on Thursday, the reason for that is, for one particular bar owner, restaurant owner, he says, you know, he needs to turn tables. And having a bar, or having a band on a Friday and a Saturday doesn't necessarily make sense, because people want to sit there and listen to the band. He wants those tables to turn. So Thursday makes a lot of sense to have a band where maybe it's not as busy as a weekend. And same goes for, for Sunday. For those people, this all got started with weekends on Main, when this noise ordinance started coming up. I just attended a Hoodlum meeting yesterday, and I think they're going to be suspending weekends on Main next, for the near future, very, you know, for next year. Now, if COVID comes back, who knows how that changes things. But, you know, everybody's going to be moving inside now. We are 100% occupancy inside. The couple bars and restaurants I can think of, you know, they're able to close their doors, limiting their, the noise outside. And I don't think it's too, too, too much of an ask to allow them to play their music. Yet 85 decibels is not, in my opinion, that loud. You know, those people that live downtown know what they were buying into. Now, for those people that, you know, it just all of a sudden became an issue over the last year or so, I understand. And then, I just want to finish up with, and, and we talked about special permit a couple of times, you know, again, I think that's just more time that staff has to, you know, and the owner, to come in and take time to fill out special permit. I don't think this ask from Hoodlum and Littleton Business Chamber to keep our businesses happy on downtown Littleton is asking too much.
Good, thank you. Who else would like to speak? We have Councilmember Fay, then Rednicki.
I think I've, I know I've spoken before about my own experience with noise and sound, and that experience is pretty dramatic in that I took a sound meter, a decibel meter, down to between County Line Road and C470, close to where I live. It's a crazy noisy place to be. Vehicles going by, took a reading, went back up about, I don't know, two blocks to my backyard, and in my backyard, it was louder. So sound is, is well-known from people who are sound engineers and study sound, are technical in the area, is, it does not think like we do. It, it has its own rules, and it, and then there's also the distortion factor, which wasn't a factor with mine, it was just volume. But the people who live around there, a lot of them bought in there or rented there when we had the previous levels. And to raise it up that much, and then when there is report of sound becoming very unpleasant, it seems unnecessary to subject the neighborhood to that kind of noise when it's, the owners can have as much volume as they want inside. And so I'm thinking, we don't have to disturb everybody in order to have a good time. I know some people have a better time if they can, but most don't have to do that. That's all.
Councilmember Rednicki.
Well, 80 decibel maybe doesn't mean anything to anybody, so I did, others maybe know fully well what it means. I did go to the internet and looked at noise equivalents. 80 decibels, 80 decibels is equivalent to garbage disposal, dishwasher, average factory, freight train at 15 meters, car wash, propeller plane flyover 1,000 feet, diesel truck, diesel train at 45 miles an hour at 100 feet, food blender, milling machine, and a garbage disposal. Those are all in the 80 decibel range. So just as a little comparison, what, what does 80 decibels mean? We can, we do allow bars, restaurants to have a ban, just stay inside anytime you want. You can do inside and out, as long as you stay at 55 to 60 decibels during the week. When I go downtown, I'm really going downtown to meet with friends and to, to talk with friends, get acquainted, meet new friends, have a good time without the press of noise. But I can understand those that want to go down and, and be entertained with some music. So, just a few of my comments.
Thank you. Mayor Protem.
I think the vibrancy and continued success of our historic downtown depends in a lot of ways on harmonious balance between the different uses, residential and business. Favoring one too much, I think detracts ultimately from, from the experience of our downtown. Moreover, this temporary ordinance has been, I think, a successful experiment. I think it was wise of council to give this type of ordinance a test run, see what happens, and then revisit. Looking at the staff presentation, just in terms of complaints, it says four complaints were filed over a two-week period against one business that played loud music after midnight on consecutive days, which obviously would be a violation of both the temporary ordinance and the proposed permanent ordinance. Besides that, it sounds like we've had one complaint from, from tonight's speaker. To my mind, that's, that's pretty successful, and I think represents a pretty fair balancing of, of the different, the different uses, the different interests downtown. I think Councilmember Rednicki makes a good point that this is a noise ordinance, it's not a banned ordinance. If, if someone who's a business owner wants to have a band on Thursday, they can, they just have to stay quieter, right? Which I think is appropriate to a workday, a workday evening. So I'm in, I'm in, in favor of the, the permanent ordinance is proposed by staff, Sunday through Thursday, the lower levels, Friday and Saturday, the higher levels. I think the times are fair, ending at 10:00 PM. I think it's a, I think it's a good, fair balance. I think it's a successful experiment, so I'm, I'm in favor.
Great. And before you go, I'm going to go ahead and throw in, because I know you have an amendment coming up. I'm in favor of adding Thursday to the Friday, Saturday. I'd also be willing to entertain dropping it down to 75, because I think you said 75 decibels was not unheard of, or unheard of.
Right. And just, if I may, we did find our specific readings. Do you want to get those? Just to give you an idea?
Yeah, we had some, in the case of the band outside, it was 74 across the street, across from the band that was playing. There is a business down there that has music under a covered patio, and out in the 10 feet away from the gentleman playing, it was 77. Other than that, it was 68. And then, at that same place, we had one reading at 80, but it was inside the patio, but it's an open patio. So the numbers are generally below 80. I think 80 is a, a good number, personally. From all the testing I did, it seemed like that was the number that, it serves its purpose in that if you get too much higher than that, it's too loud for the people sitting there. But below that, it seemed to be comfortable, just from my findings.
Great, thank you. And so, when a vehicle goes by a loud vehicle, did, did your measure go off at all for that?
Every time.
And what does that number go up to?
It gets above 80. I mean, a motorcycle goes by, a four-wheel drive with big tires, a diesel, it would always shoot up.
And, and let alone one of the emergency vehicles.
Right. The weekends on Main, you didn't have the traffic going by, but on the other times, when we just standing there, I would literally have to wait for the traffic to go by, for it to go back down, and then take a reading of the sound, right? But the mute, the, the traffic noise is higher, or as high as any music noise down there.
Great, thank you. Councilmember Milliman.
First of all, thank you, Ernie, and to Rebecca, I both, I really appreciate both of your technical expertise and all the work that you put into this, so thank you. And then I also want to extend a, kudos to Karina Elrider, former council member, because she was the one that pushed this temporary ordinance way back when, last spring. So, and I agree with Scott, that it has been a successful experiment. And so, thanks for y'all, thank you for all your work on that. I am a big supporter of all of our businesses in downtown on Main Street, and I appreciate the input from Hoodlum and from the business chamber. And I actually would support adding Thursday too then as well, and I also support adding Sunday. It's 12 to 6. As it's getting darker earlier, that could be an extra day for, I don't even know if it's worth it for the businesses to, you know, pay somebody to come out there for six hours, but it's an option for them. And so I think we need to show our support, because they did take a big hit during COVID. And they are a big, they're the backbone of our, of our community, quite honestly. And so I would support this ordinance, but I agree with Jerry, I would add on Thursday and, and Sunday.
Did you have an amendment? Can you make it now if you like?
I would like to add, my amendment would be to add Thursdays.
So, so that we can make it a little easier, if we can just contain the amendments to, to one question at a time.
Okay.
So if I'm understanding it correct, you would like to add Thursday to the ordinance for the 12 to 10:00 PM at 80, and the 10:00 PM to noon the next day at 55?
Yes.
Okay.
I agree with that. Thank you.
All right, so that is your motion?
That's my motion.
All right, do we have a second? Mayor? Do we have a second? I'll second it just for the... There we go. We have a, we have a motion and a second by Councilmember Rednicki.
But I also have a question for staff, if I may ask. The 80 decibel measure, is that measured 10 feet out from where the sound is coming from, or at the perimeter, the limits of the historic district? Like the outer limits, let's call it?
We had 11 spots that we went to all 139 times, and this is all in different spots. Some of it was right next to it. If we did find a band, we would take readings real close, and usually the decibel readings were at 80.
So the violation would be anywhere in, within the district?
It's at the property line normally, so it's kind of hard to find the property line downtown.
Yeah.
You know, but if a band was playing, then we would stop at the property line, take a reading.
Okay. So, thank you.
All right, Councilmember Driscoll.
Yes, just for clarity, Reed, if we wanted to take Kelly's motion and increase the decibels up to 80, should that be a separate amendment, or should we handle her motion first, since it's been seconded?
We're going to handle her motion first. Now, her motion right now is to have it up at 80 on Thursdays.
Okay, great.
12 to 10.
Okay.
12 to 10.
Okay. How about adding that extra hour on Thursday?
That will be a separate amendment. When we do motions, we try to contain one question in the motion.
Yes, okay.
At a time. Unlike last week. All right, cool. Councilmember Grove.
Point of clarification. So your amendment is for Thursday?
Thursday.
Just Thursday?
That's all we're talking. Any more discussion?
Yeah. That seems to me to be a lot, going beyond the weekend. I know Thursday's a, a great day to go out, it's kind of the end of the week, but looking, if, if this ordinance does pass, it's weekends, and that's five days of kind of quietness and two days, which is a weekend. But adding a third day to me seems a lot. I know some of the businesses, of course, we want our businesses to thrive, but can they thrive just at a lower level and have, be good neighbors? I, it seems like it's possible.
That's what we're voting on. Councilmember Driscoll, then Rednicki.
Jennifer, do we know how many bands? I mean, it's, we're making it sound like they're going to have a band every single Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, all through the entire winter and summer of next year. I mean, you know, I go down there awful lot, and...
Well, there's, there's particular businesses that have bands just about every week, and their location did alter the sound. Like at the end, they were pointing inward, and that is far more, far quieter when they're faced inside. But you can hear it outside pleasantly. It's not as loud, right?
Sure.
But, yeah, there's five businesses down there that have bands probably every week, different versions of that. Sometimes it's five-piece or two-piece bands, and so, yeah, but when the band gets out in the street, that's when it starts bouncing around.
Right, right. And that was mostly on weekends on Main.
Right.
Right, which are done for the year at least. Okay.
Cool. Rednicki.
I will not support the Thursday amendment. It is a, it is a work week, and I think the residents have a, have a need to get to sleep at a reasonable time for a Friday workday. You can still have music, as I mentioned before, you just have to turn the volume down. So you get a folk band on Thursday and play Puff the Magic Dragon, and keep it, keep it a little quieter.
With your kids. Any more discussion? All right, so we're going to vote on the amendment. City clerk, if you would please read it back.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Milliman moved, and Councilmember Rednicki seconded, to amend the ordinance to include Thursdays from noon to 10:00 PM at 80 decibels and 10:00 PM to noon at 55 decibels.
And a yes vote is in favor of the amendment, and a no is opposed. Thank you. Alamo.
The vote is three to four, with Councilmembers Grove, Malin, Fay, and Rednicki voting no. The amendment fails.
All right, so we're back to our main motion, unless there's other motions.
I have a second motion.
Let's hear it.
I motion to add Sundays.
It's an amendment, not a motion.
An amendment to add Sundays from 12:00 PM to 6:00 PM at 80 decibels.
Second. We have a motion and a second by Councilmember Driscoll. Discussion.
Could you repeat the times, 12 to what?
12:00 PM to 6:00 PM.
12 to 6:00, thank you.
And this was a recommendation from Littleton Business Chamber in Hoodlum.
Again, I think this is a very reasonable ask. Sundays, you know, I imagine you can get Bronco games on, are going to be louder than, than bands out there. So again, everybody, going into the winter months, anything we can do to support our businesses.
Excellent. Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion on the table. If you could please read the motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Milliman moved, and Councilmember Driscoll seconded, to add Sundays from noon to 6:00 PM at 80 decibels.
Great. A yes vote is to support that amendment, a no is to oppose. Vote, please.
The vote is four to three, with Councilmembers Grove, Malin, and Fay voting no. The motion carries.
Thank you. We're back to our main motion. Any more discussion? Okay, city clerk, if you could please read the motion.
The main motion now as amended. Councilmember Milliman moved, and Mayor Protem Malin seconded, to approve ordinance 2521, repealing and reenacting, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong motion. Goodness gracious.
Say what?
Hold on, I think I deleted the one I needed. Thank you. We're back to our main motion. Any more discussion? Okay, City Clerk, if you could please read the motion?
The main motion now, as amended, Councilmember Milliman moved, and Mayor Protem Malin seconded, to approve ordinance twenty-five, twenty-one, repealing and reenacting, oh, I'm sorry, I'm reading the wrong motion. Goodness gracious.
Say what?
Hold on, I think I deleted the one I needed. Give me just one second, I apologize. Thank you, City Attorney.
I, I'll go ahead and read it. How's that?
I got it.
You got it?
I moved to approve ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, amending the Noise Control Ordinance Title VII, Chapter Three, Sections Three and Six of the Littleton City Code pertaining to standards and maximum permissible continuous sound pressure levels in the Main Street Historic District as amended.
All right, a yes vote is to support that motion?
Sorry, Mayor, can I just add a little bit more conversation?
Absolutely.
Yeah, I guess I'm just a little bit disappointed in sort of the process behind what I think is going to be our policymaking here. I thought it was wise of council to put in place the temporary ordinance, as I said, as an experiment. See how it goes, right? And again, I think it was successful, right? And, and during that, that period of the experiment, where staff had an opportunity to take measurements, to get council information, council had an opportunity to ask questions and deliberate. I think we need that runway always, right, to, to make higher quality policy. For me, you know, adding Sunday is quite frankly tantamount to, you know, yet another amendment from the dais, like with the fireworks ordinance. We're not aware of what the ramifications are going to be. We've had, we've had no opportunity to collect information, you know? And I don't hear anything compelling in the, in the comments, in the letters from, from Hoodlum and the chamber. You know, I've, I've not heard a, a single business owner who regularly has bands come, show up to public comment and say, "Look, I, I gathered the following data. If you give me Sunday, I turn more tables." It's just an untested assumption. And I just don't think that, I just don't think that it, it's going to, to result in data-driven policy, which has been a commitment of this council, a stated commitment of this council. I think it's guesswork. And, and, you know, I'm just, I'm just opposed to Sunday for, for that reason.
Point, point of order, haven't we already voted?
No.
I'm sorry, my bad.
We did vote on the Sunday amendment.
He was continuing discussion.
Point of order, we've already voted.
We're, we're on the, not on the main motion, we have not.
Yeah, but here's what I can say, is I'm just going to say no.
Right, wait, let me deal with the point of order. Okay, sure. So he's just discussing it. We're getting, we're getting ready to, he's talking about, we're voting on the main motion. That's what his comment is, is if we pass this. So, so that's, that's where we are. So you can continue on your.
Yeah, yeah, Sunday or not, I mean, I can say that with Sunday added, you know, it's worth considering whether there should be a no vote on, on the ordinance at all. But anyway, those are the, those are the points I wanted to raise, so.
And, and I'm going to chime in here, too, again. I'm in favor of this motion with the amendment of Sunday. I think what we're, we're looking at is, is keeping Sunday as a vibrant day on Main Street. Otherwise, it'll go back to just quiet, and why do people even want to come down here and see things? So I'm, I'm going to be supporting the, the motion with the amendment. Councilmember Grove, then Milliman?
I don't think anybody on council was non-supportive of our businesses, nor would not want them to thrive. And I think this ordinance was appropriate to kind of help out when times were tough, and bring more people, and even add to the already vibrant downtown. What I'm concerned about is that you can have a good time and not have it blasting in your ear, and not be a, somebody who is not good for the surrounding people, no matter what time of day it is. They understand, maybe in the evening, things are a little louder, a little bit noisier, but do we have to carry it to such a high level? Sixty-five worked, and so I don't see a problem with keeping it sixty-five. There's, still can have bands, still can have people come, still it can have people inside. It's just not going over the top in an area that is close to residential areas. So for that reason, I'm not going to be supporting this.
Right, Councilmember Milliman?
I will be supporting this ordinance. And I'm assuming that Hoodlum and the Business Chamber did get together and talk to the businesses on Main Street, and, and discussed adding Thursday and Sunday as a way to bring in more revenues, bring in more folks into downtown Littleton. So I will be supporting this.
Great. If there's no more discussion?
I think we exceeded sixty-five decibels just by talking here.
We may have. All right. But if you would read it one more time.
This blaring music that I'm hearing about isn't so, isn't so compelling.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Milliman moved, and Mayor Protem Malin seconded, to approve ordinance seventeen dash twenty twenty-one, amending the Noise Control Ordinance Title VII, Chapter Three, Sections Three and Six of the Littleton City Code pertaining to standards and maximum permissible, permissible continuous sound pressure levels in the Main Street Historic District as amended, with the addition of Sunday.
Great, thank you. A yes vote is to support that as amended, and a no vote is against. So if you're ready.
The vote is four to three, with Councilmembers Grove, Malin, and Fay voting no. The motion as amended carries.
Good, thank you. We will move on to our next item. On our agenda, it is nine B, ordinance twenty-five dash twenty twenty-one, an ordinance on second reading, repealing and reenacting Chapter Twenty-three entitled Short Term Rentals to Title Three Business Regulations. Okay. So council, after staff presentation and council discussion, we will be looking for a motion. And I'm just going to turn it right over to the city manager.
Who is going to immediately hand it over, Mayor, to the city attorney, who's going to be making the presentation this evening?
Thank you, Mayor and council. I'm just trying to get the PowerPoint loaded up.
You're killing our rate, and the city attorney.
So greetings. Tonight, before you, is amendments to our business licensing requirements for short-term rentals. When we met a couple weeks ago, we got direction from city council to proceed on a couple of changes. But by way of some background, obviously, short-term rentals has been part of a discussion amongst city councils in the city, as well as this council for some time. I won't go through kind of the list, the bullet points up there, as to the amount of discussions and time and effort that both our council has had, as well as our citizens coalition that was formed soon after, I would say it was January fifteenth, two thousand and nineteen, where after some work, a proposed ordinance was brought before that council, and it was narrowly defeated four to three. Following that, a citizens coalition of both STR operators, as well as those who probably would lean a little bit against STRs, kind of met, and kind of came up with compromises, if you will, in regard to what would be acceptable. And so some of those ideas were presented to our council. And some of those ideas are currently a part of our business licensing provisions. So most recently, back in November of twenty twenty last year, that's what staff did. Staff got direction from city council to put together some business licensing provisions. And at the time, the intent was never to solve everything about short-term rentals, but really to give us a good base from which the city could operate, from which the city could learn more, as we went through the ULUC process, in terms of, are STRs even appropriate? Are they appropriate in particular zoning districts and not others? Is owner-occupied, or what we call primary or non-primary rentals, appropriate? Are they appropriate in certain districts and, and not other districts? And so we put together a licensing business plan. And what that ordinance did, which we're acting on amendments for tonight, is it established those licensing requirements for the operation of, of STRs. It established an annual licensing program and requirements, and that go through our finance department, gave us definitions for, at the time, short-term primary and short-term non-primary rentals. It limited the maximum occupancy of STRs to eight. We required and added off-street parking requirements, so that the use of those STRs was not spilling out into the public roadways and the streets. At the time, we prohibited STRs and accessory dwelling units. This was one of those questions that was going to be coming before council, as we had never, in our city code, talked about accessory dwelling units. In fact, technically, they're not allowed within the city, or they weren't, haven't been. As well as safety requirements, as, as well as the requirement that they carry adequate insurance, as well as penalties for violations. So we added all those things as kind of a base, as we went through the ULUC, to try to determine what, if anything else, we needed to add. Continuing on with that November adoption, it established a checklist for applicants to go through, in conducting those initial premises checks. We also had the Good Neighbor Handout, which was required to be posted on the property, which lets those people using an STR know, you know, what the rules are, who to contact, as well as requiring a mailing to those adjacent properties to let them know, you know, "Hey, we're going to be operating an STR. Here's a contact number. If something's going wrong, please contact this number." One of the requirements in our business licensing is it requires anyone operating an STR to have someone that can respond within two hours. So if there's a noise complaint, if there's something going on, people around that neighborhood or that particular residence should know who to contact. So back in January of this year, at a study session, we discussed what we needed to address in that ULUC. And I mentioned it earlier, but what types of zoning districts should STRs be allowed in? Are there some that just, no, they can't be in that particular district? Do you want owner-occupied, or what we call primary? Primary and non-primary? You know, we had talked about ways to address it. Some of those ways were, we want to limit the number of STRs in an area, you know, say, on a block. Do we want to allow STRs in ADUs? Do, and we got into the discussion more recently about some of the coalition suggestions, which were, you know, limit these, the number of licenses, so you could have, say, one non-primary and one primary. Limited to potentially only Littleton residents could operate STRs. Limited so that LLCs can't operate STRs. Those sorts of discussions have happened over the last year, and have been brought forward to this council for those decisions. So, you know, recently, back in August, we had two study sessions. The most recent study session on the twenty-fourth is where we talked about the ULUC, and we had a couple members from the coalition join us and give us kind of a brief presentation regarding some of the things that they had originally proposed that weren't in there, and, and what their thoughts were on that. And that was, that was Mr. Price and Ms. Angle, I believe, is back there, joining us tonight. And council provided direction on that twenty-fourth meeting. And the direction that council gave at that time is no non-primary, short-term rentals in the city. The direction that council gave at that time is, I'll get to the last part in a second, but that STRs could be allowed to happen in attached ADUs. And one of the directions that was given is because we did not, or council was giving direction not to have non-primary, short-term rentals, that we phased that out. That we give those current licensed, non-primary, short-term rentals that are in effect, five years. Five years to close down their operations. And at the time, I said, "Yep, you bet. Make it happen." And then I did some legal research. And I contacted, I contacted a technical consultant to make sure that my findings were correct. We will call them outside counsel. And what it was, was that there's an existing state law and case law out there that actually make it so that a, you can't phase out a non-conforming use. We can't amortize it, as you could in other jurisdictions, you know, outside of the United States. So there's a specific state statute which says we can't do that. The effect of that is essentially, we are grandfathering in approximately, I'm going to make up a number, and Jennifer will correct me, but I'm going to say it's, there's probably twenty-five. Yes.
Winner.
We currently have, and we only have about forty-five licensed STRs operating within our city. More than half of those are non-owner-occupied. There's a few that are owned by a company. I think they own five. The rest have residents who own them, who do not live in that, that house. So we can't do anything about those. Those are going to have to continue to, to operate within our city. And I believe that, unless I added some, something else, I mean, that's essentially what we're doing today, is we're amending the current ordinance to take out the non-primary, short-term rentals, so that they're not allowed in the city, other than those who already obtained a license. I will tell you that there are people who have approached the city to try to get a license, and they've been turned away, saying that, you know, the pending ordinance doctrine is in effect. Our city council is making a decision, you know, on whether or not to allow a non-primary. So we're not accepting any applications. You know, those folks probably should have gotten a, a license eleven months ago. So they're kind of out of luck. So those people that are currently operating a non-primary short-term rental, that don't have a business license, not allowed. So even if you had been operating it, but you'd never gotten a license, not allowed. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to address those. Jennifer's here as well, to correct all my misinformation. But essentially, all this amendment is doing is taking out the non-primary. It is adding STRs to attached ADUs, and that's about that.
Okay, we'll start with Councilmember Driscoll, then Milliman.
Reed, what happens when somebody sells that property? It, that, that?
It doesn't transfer the use.
Thank you.
Reed and/or Jennifer, those twenty-five non-primary properties, are majority of them in the downtown area, or they kind of sprinkled around the city?
I would have to double-check that. I do not have that information. We do have a number of short-term rentals in downtown, however.
Reed, what is the status of council talking about an administrative review process? I know for a time, that was on this council's tentative calendar. I think now is that later on. I just see it, I mean, it's fine if it comes somewhat later than tonight, but I do see it as pretty integral to our STR policy functioning, fully functioning.
Right. It hasn't been scheduled. I know we've been kicking the can, or I've been kicking the can on this, as we've gotten busier towards the back half, but certainly on our radar, to put together, and I think what you're referring to, Mayor Protem, is the administrative hearing procedure that would govern a lot of aspects of our code. So throughout our code, we, you know, we give various persons the ability to appeal a decision, if you will, that, you know, say Jennifer's making, or someone in Community Development or Finance. And we don't have anything really fleshed out in terms of a procedure in which, how that appeal actually works, what the standard of review really is in that appeal. And so I do have a draft. I just haven't been able to find the other various sections within the rest of our codes that it's going to apply to. But certainly something that I agree, it needs to be in place, especially if individuals are going to lose their STR license, which is something that our original business license provisions allowed. It allowed for your license to be revoked if you were not complying. So that, that's another penalty, if you will, that we adopted. But you're right, we should kind of flesh out the review process.
Thanks. Councilmember Fay, then Rednicki?
I'm going to ask two questions to clarify what it is you were saying. I, I, it's been long enough now, a few minutes, that I don't remember the term you were using. So are we still keeping the requirement that except for grandfathered-in properties, a short-term rental? in short-term rental has to be occupied by the primary?
Correct.
Correct. So, then, second question is, what we are keeping is that we can, that anybody who's grandfathered-in stays grandfathered-in for as long as they own the business?
Correct, until they sell the property or try to transfer the property to, to an individual. We also have a non-conforming section, so usually when you have a non-conforming use, you can continue that use until a period of time goes by where you've discontinued that use. And I'm looking towards Jennifer to see if she remembers what the duration was that we put in the ULUC.
I believe six months, but I can double-check that. I was trying to find the map.
I think that's correct. So, if a period of six months went by, we're going to use that number, where it was not operating as an STR, perhaps they just decided, you know, the business is not really working for STRs right now, I'm just going to get it to someone a little bit more steady, just rent it out for a year. They can't go back and then do STRs after that.
And how do we even know that?
That's a good question. Scout's honor.
Scout's honor. Renicki.
Get back to the, get back to the non-conforming use. Typically, a non-conforming use, like for a property was built with a certain setback, certain height, roof overhangs that meets current code, that doesn't meet, or it was built under the old code, doesn't not meet the current code, that is a grandfathered-in, a non-conforming use grandfathered-in, and it goes with the property even though the property is sold. What you're saying is, the short-term rentals, it's a different story here.
Yeah, I think what you'd be referring to is a non-conforming structure. So, we have non-conforming structure and non-conforming uses. The non-conforming structure can be allowed to be transferred, but not the use.
Okay. Good, thank you. The second item, I think you started to talk about it. Say, the non-primary STR, the owner games the system. They, they get their license every year, but they haven't done an STR for, for a couple of years, three years. But it, it's to their benefit to sell the property as an STR, because they maybe can get more money out of it. And so, how do you, how do you stop that?
Well, they wouldn't be, so we have an annual license.
Right.
If they decided to, to sell it and market it as an STR for someone else making an investment property purchase, as soon as that person came in to get a, a new license, because they'd have to get relicensed every year, we would notice that that is a different person and not allow for that transfer to happen.
Okay. Let's say the, the owner doesn't do an STR for, for years. Basically, you say, until that use is discontinued, let's say it's discontinued by the owner, he still is the owner, but he hasn't done STRs for years, but he still applies for a license. I guess you're, again, you're counting on the, you know, scout's honor.
Yeah, and there's, there's no provisions within our code that require you to have a minimum, you know, number of rentals or anything like that, so.
Okay.
Yeah, it would be challenging to, to enforce in that particular case where someone was just standing on the up and up, making sure they had the license in case they wanted to go back to that. I don't think we necessarily thought forward in terms of an auditing process to show that you rented this out at some point in the past year or anything like that.
Yeah, what do you do? Go into their house, check the closets, and see if the owner's still there? Yeah, okay. It's tough.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Yes, I move to approve ordinance 25-2021, repealing and reenacting chapter 23 entitled Short-Term Rentals.
We haven't had the public hearing yet.
Oh, that's right. I'm sorry.
Sorry.
Good catch. Good catch. He's, he's ready, there's no hockey game on yet. All right. But is there any more discussion? If not, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. It is 8:02. Then, do we have a list? And that just as a reminder, for each speaker, you will have three minutes to speak. Please give us your name, address, or council district number, and speak directly into the microphone. We have one name on air, and that's Angela Ingle.
I really appreciate the history and the fact that you, Mr. Betsing, included the work of our coalition. And a little bit, is this going to be redundant, but I want to make sure it's part of the public record. So, we did have both sides come together on this issue, starting in January 26 of 2019. We met over the course of several months. We represented about 60 Littleton citizens from both sides of this issue. And the most contentious part of this was the issue of primary and non-primary. It was the reason that the first ordinance went down, and it was the whole kind of reason that brought us together, to try and find a compromise. And so, our goal was to do several things. Balance respect for community with the rights of property owners, the need to support local business community, which I know has been talked about a lot tonight, and also with understanding that those support for local businesses drive a lot of the city services that we depend on. So, we wanted to come up with a balanced compromise. And this will be the second time now that our recommendations have been rejected by this board. And I want to tell you, I have a lot of feelings about it, but mostly it's sadness, because we live in a very divided political climate right now. And it's very rare that you have two sides come together and hash out a compromise. And that is exactly what we've done, and it was a very reasonable compromise. It limited STRs, and it also made sure that we had lodging for people that were wanting to come and enjoy the benefits of our great Littleton community. So, by banning non-primary residents, essentially, you've cut out 2/3 of what represents the STRs. About 2/3 are non-primary. So, I understand that they've been grandfathered-in, but in terms of going forward, there's been a lot of time and a lot of energy, and I respect your time and energy, and ours too, on these 45 houses that provide lodging in our community. So, I'm sad, and I'm disappointed. And I feel like there was an opportunity for a win-win here, and that the voices of citizens was not heated, and that community engagement was not valued. And I just want to share that. The other thing is that, you know, I'm hearing a lot tonight about a sales tax increase, and a lot about the noise ordinance and wanting to support our local businesses. I think there's a disconnect in terms of what STRs provide for this community, because we have very limited lodging opportunities in the city of Littleton. And our STRs predominantly have provided safe lodging with respect to community. We've had a couple in three years that have been problematic, and we now have ordinance in place to address those. So, that issue has been solved. And I'm just, just I'll wrap up real quickly. While the board has not made the connection to supporting local businesses and STRs, I do hope that the business community will. Thank you.
Thank you, Angela. Thank you very much. All right. That was it for the sign-up list. Was there anyone else who would like to speak? We'll start with Paul, and then you.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. I'm, I'm Paul, Paul Bingham. I live in District 3. I followed this thing along for years, and it has been years, and you folks have spent a lot of time on it. Reed has spent a lot of time on it. Jennifer's spent a lot of time on it. I think collectively, you've done a fine job. Please pass this thing tonight. There's more changes to be done. It's not perfect, but please pass it. It's a milestone, and we can go on from here. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next.
I'm Carrie Vith. I live at 6817 South Hill Street, and I own another property in downtown, just right off Main. You know, as I've observed this over the last few years, and especially more recently, I've been disappointed in how the council has approached these rules around STRs. You know, as has been mentioned, you know, there was a lot of citizen involvement, and that has been thrown out the window. Rules and laws should be based on logic. And when I reviewed the August 24th study session, there is a substantial amount of ignoring of logic. There were comments being made by council members that all of downtown might become STRs, or that my entire block would have 15 STRs on it if non-primary were allowed. And that's just not the case, right? We've heard tonight that the council wants to be data-driven, and I believe the number referenced on that evening was that 0.002% of properties in Littleton are short-term rentals. And that's obviously a very small number, and that's when everything's been legalized. So, it's not a legalization versus non-legalization issue of, of primary rentals. They've been allowed, and that's the number we've gotten to. So, that's the number we can expect moving forward. There's been comments that short-term rentals from non-primary owners damage our neighborhoods. I would challenge the people that damage, that say that their, their neighborhoods are damaged with how many neighbors they know. Do they know all 100 of their closest neighbors? Because we're talking a fraction of that. Way less than 1% are actually going to be used as a non-primary rental. Right now, I think the number is 25 out of 20,000 units. I do agree, though, that there should be protection. There should be rules in place for bad actors. I know a couple of council members and a couple people have come up here with bad experiences, and those should be eliminated. But banning STRs in this way, where we say nothing is allowed except at primary for three months of the year, is like trying to fix a leaky faucet with a sledgehammer. You're just taking everything out for a minor problem. Lastly, the ULUC has been promoted as your draft. If you go down the High Line Canal or walk around town, you'll see your draft give us feedback. The Citizens Committee gave feedback. The ULUC, in its first draft, had that feedback, and actually, while more restrictive than what the citizens recommended, was not nearly this step. But the emotions and the fear that is present from council changed that, and it was clear that it was being driven off personal experience, not logic, not data. I apologize for any bad experiences that you've had, and I empathize with you there, but one, or two, or three bad experiences does not mean we throw the baby out with the bathwater. Thank you.
Anyone else? Come on up.
I'm Pam Chadbourne. I live a block and a half from here, next door to an STR, which is non-primary owner occupied. I'm sorry about Reed's research. If you weren't as good, maybe we could violate the law for a while. Every non-primary owner occupied, non-owner occupied STR is a whole in a community, because, and I've said, my father, when he was older, both of his neighbors, we had their numbers. And if my, when my father did not answer the phone on Sunday night, it was the neighbor who was there first and let the fire department in. I'm going to tell you, somebody in the STR does not do that, unless it's owner occupied, and then you know who they are, and they can help you out, and that is Littleton. So, the claim that somehow non-owner occupied is okay, and is okay with the community is not true. Second of all, I appreciate the coalition and the work that it did, but I'm going to say it was formed three years ago, two years ago, three years ago, and that was when we had 20-some STRs in the city. You know, the informal count was 96 or something like that, of which half were licensed or so. And for a long time, the one next to me was not licensed until we got to require it. And then I was able to call and say, hey, I think the place next door to me is an STR. What can you do? That coalition did not include me. It was formed before that. It did not include half of us who live next door to our STRs now. I appreciate their work, but honestly, I don't think it's representative of all of us. There's also a tendency, and you saw it in the noise ordinance, to say, if it's downtown, it's okay, and I'm sorry, but that isn't true. We who live downtown have more nuisances around us, and the more that you add, the more you are compromising the value of our downtown. And I'm not sure how long you think it's going to last, but I'm going to say there's a breaking point. Downtown Denver is hollowed out now, because it's costly to live there, but it's hard to live there, too, and you reach a point at which people will move out. I want parity with hotels, and I want more hotels, and how do you get them to grow? You don't put in tons of competition around. I think we should have B&Bs along Littleton Boulevard in mid-century modern historic overlay district. I think that's a great vision. We can't have that if we have a bunch of STRs competing with those B&Bs. That would be better for Littleton. I think there's other arguments, but thanks for listening this long. Please have the primary only, and don't weaken it. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else saying none? We'll close this part of the meeting at 8:13. Council. Mr. Driscoll.
Yeah, I'm still going to go ahead and make a, a motion to move to approve ordinance 25-2021, repealing and reenacting, reenacting chapter 23 entitled Short-Term Rentals to Title III Business Regulations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Councilmember Grove. Discussion, let's start with you, Patrick.
Sure. You know, I appreciate the comments from the citizens tonight. This has been a process. I, I thought we did a good job of listening to the coalition, to the other citizens out there that had, that weren't part of the coalition. I thought this was a, a good compromise, a good start. We all agreed early on, this was not going to be the end of it. We're going to have continued conversation on it. We're going to monitor this. I hope, for everybody's sake, that, I, I put out the warning two and a half years ago, that get licensed, get licensed, get licensed, and if not, you're, we're going to shut down your, your, your business. I hope those people got licensed. I have a feeling there's start, there's still a lot of short-term rentals out there operating without a license, and I hope we can find some money in our budget to hire a company to enforce that, those people that are basically breaking law if we pass this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Kelly.
STRs play a, a part of the variety of lodging options that should be available in Littleton. And I'm all for STRs. I know that when we do limit them, we are, our tourism is going to take a hit, as well as our businesses could take a hit. We don't have a lot of STRs, but they do play a part in that whole financial revenue stream. So, since we are not allowing STRs in detached ADUs, I know when, and somebody that sent us an, an email earlier today, when a lot of folks do like to stay in STRs that are non-primary owner occupied. They don't want to stay in the house with the owner there. I'm going to propose an amendment to allow one non-primary STR in the downtown area per person? I don't know if I'm saying that right. Reed, he's, he's rolling his eyeballs. So, with the coalition, I know that, that, you know, what they, what they came to...
Are you making a motion?
I am, but...
And what is the motion?
To allow one, one non-primary owner occupied STR per owner, if you will, in the downtown, just in the downtown area, as the coalition agreed upon.
All right. I'll second that. Any more discussion? Go on that, Kelly. Go, Councilmember Milliman.
You know, I'll go back again to the coalition. They, they really did work hard over the last two years. I mean, they got together with staff independently four times. They came to us and presented the study session. They were pro-STRs, and, you know, those that were against STRs, and they did, they compromised. And I think that we owe this to them, to at least allow this non-primary owner occupied one STR per owner in the downtown area.
Thank you. I'm going to add on to that, too. STRs, with the exception of, there have been a couple that were issues. Other than that, STRs, they were existing out there, and then nobody even mentioned them until a couple bad ones did happen. And I think one might have been in your area, two in your area. They were, and they were the reason we got this thing started almost four years ago now. Times have changed. STRs are very common, most everywhere you go. I know I've stayed in them. Some with owners living there, some without the owners living at the property. I'm okay with including the non-primary, and I like the idea of just maybe limiting it to one. We can always change that at another time if we think it should change. And, and for the city attorney, what are the penalty or fine for those that do not get a license, and then we later learn that they are operating? and then we later learn that they are operating?
1-4-1 sets forth the general penalties for failure to comply, and that would be $2,650 per violation and/or 364 days in jail.
Great, thank you. I just wanted you to say that so people could hear that. So I'm in favor of this amendment to the motion.
May I have some clarification on the amendment? So the amendment is, if I'm understanding it, we mentioned the downtown area. That's not defined in our code. So would the downtown zoning district be the downtown area that is sought to be defined by the amendment?
I think I need to help with staff on this one.
Just to clarify, as the zoning map is proposed now, we do not have a DT zone district. We have four downtown, four zoning districts that cover what is effectively known as downtown. So those zone districts are DTA, DMU, DMS, and DNR.
Then I would advocate for all four of those districts to be included in that amendment.
Yeah. All right. We'll go to Mayor Protem and Carol.
Yeah, I'm opposed to the amendment, because I think, you know, certainly as it's proposed, it opens up the whole unresolved, controversial, almost hyper-complicated can of worms around, for example, corporate ownership. Corporations are persons legally, and, you know, basically, this is exactly contrary to the conversation council had that resulted in us landing on owner-occupied STRs. If we start letting LLCs own STRs, we have problems on our hands. And I'm simply not willing, in this setting, you know, an amendment from the dais to go anywhere near that type of, that type of policy. So I'm opposed.
Okay. Councilmember Fay.
What, what I, could you read the amendment again?
I'd be happy to. Councilmember Milliman moved, and Mayor Valdez seconded, to allow one non-primary-owned STR per owner in the downtown area. That has been clarified as zone districts, DTA, DMU, DMS, and DNR. Is that correct, Jen?
Thank you. Essel.
You know, I'm also going to oppose that. You know, we've really discussed this thoroughly, I thought. And to start throwing ordinance or amendments out there, I think we just need to let this, let this ride for a year or two. Let's see, let's see how it plays out. Let's, you know, future councils kind of have these, this debate. If we continue to see a good track record of licensing and of, you know, for better lack of term, good behavior, then, yeah, maybe it's, maybe it's time to expand. Let's not forget, we do have four hotels, you know, on county line and where the prop, you know, new hotels coming out of the ground right down the street from downtown. So we will have plenty of places for people to stay. Thank you.
Good, thank you. Councilmember Reddicki.
I'm also against the amendment. Generally, we have got more accountability with owner-occupied STRs. Secondly, the Citizens Committee, I didn't have anything to do with them. I was looking at them from afar when I was on Planning Commission, but quite frankly, they don't represent 48,000 people. I've designed STRs as part of the principal residence, and it can be done effectively, separate entries. It looks like the house is just a single-family house. It can be done. It can be done well. Lastly, the times they are changing. They're existing now, legal and illegal. It's the coming thing, and Littleton eventually needs to get on board.
We have Councilmember Grove and then Protem.
I support the ordinance as it stands and not the amendment. I think having non-primary short-term rentals opens our city up to a more transient population, to people that care less about their neighbors, that don't give back to the community. And I think it goes to the integrity of our neighborhoods that we want to maintain, as well as our community as a whole. I don't think we should single out the downtown area as an area that we don't want to have that integrity, that level of community. So that's why I support the ordinance and oppose the amendment.
Thank you. Protem.
Yeah, I guess just to expand from my own perspective on the, on the point that Councilmember Reddicki made about who council represents, which I think is a good one. I want to distinguish between disregarding and disagreeing. You know, for my part, I did not disregard the coalition. I made every effort, in fact, to hear them out, meeting with them, talking with them on the phone. I simply disagreed with certain parts of their analysis, their conclusions. Maybe to put it a different way, both sides of the issue isn't necessarily all sides of the issue. I had concerns from my first meeting around their, what seemed to be shaping up as their recommended policy around, for example, corporate ownership. So I appreciate the work that they did, but I hope they don't feel disregarded. I simply disagree.
Thank you. If there's no more discussion, could you read back the amendment to the motion, and we'll go for a vote?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Milliman moved, and Mayor Valdez seconded, to allow one non-primary-owned STR per owner in the downtown area, clarified as DTA, DMU, DMS, or DNR zone areas.
A yes vote is in favor of the amendment, and no is opposed.
The vote is two to five, with Councilmembers Grove, Millen, Fay, Driscoll, and Reddicki voting no. The motion to amend fails.
And we still have a main motion on the table. Any more discussion on the main motion? If you could read back the main motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Driscoll moved, and Councilmember Grove seconded, to approve ordinance 25-2021, repealing and reenacting Chapter 23 entitled Short-Term Rentals to Title III Business Regulations.
Okay, a yes is in favor of, and a no is opposed. So council, if you would please vote.
The vote is six to one, with Councilmember Milliman voting no. The motion carries.
All right, council. That is all of our business tonight, unless there's something else we want to add. Good job finally getting this. Took us four years, but something got passed. All right, it is 8:26, and we are adjourned.